And for the city of Trenton County Mercer, appropriate funding, three hundred and fifteen thousand and sixty seven dollars here. That's an efficient at one minute, six hundred and maybe fifty dollars in bond notes to the city to finance part of these costs.
A question, could be a question. Do we have a representative from the order department here?
We are representing the board of ordinances. The finance department is representing these.
Got you. Can you provide a layman term explanation of these, of this ordinance?
Okay, next one. This first one is a general obligation ordinance has to do with what the city needed in your capital, in your capital to do improvements to the city. And it was, this is the second reading. It already went to a local finance board. It was approved by the local finance board. And these were the projects, the county ordinance, and those are in the ordinance. It tells you all the projects that the city wanted to do in the, also in the capital budget, but these are the things in the ordinance that the city wanted to do, the capital projects.
What was the impetus for the projects here? Like, were we compelled to do this by D C, by D P?
It's the city, okay.
No, no, I understand it's the city, but who?
So when, when you had the budget hearings in FY nineteen, budget hearings, no, FY twenty, FY nineteen, all the departments went into their budget hearings with their capital budgets, okay? And then they were, whatever that happens in those hearings or hearings for the, for their budget, that's what came, this ordinance is what came out of it.
So, so just to be clear, this is to pay for the capital projects that we already voted permanently for?
This is from the capital budget and this is just transferred onto an ordinance, yes.
Yeah, so we already, okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Um, Madam Chair, the capital budget, we're talking about the one that we just accepted, that eleven years, been through.
No, the previous years, FY nineteen's capital budget. And it, it all went through when Joan Garrett was working here and she was doing the budget hearings. Those capital projects were brought up in those hearings and they were talked about. And these were the things that came out of those meetings that was put into the capital budget. And, and then after the capital budget was appro, after the budget was approved, then it goes to an ordinance. And we just pulled out what was in the capital budget and we put it in this, in this ordinance.
So you carried that over to this budget?
It's been a long process, this, this we started in FY nineteen. No, no, it's, it's not going by, capital budgets don't.
Because we are now approving our budgets, so.
It has nothing to do with that. Cap, um, a bond ordinance is, is that, it gives you the permission to spend on capital projects. Where being FY nineteen, FY twenty, but these were also approved in FY nineteen and they still need to be done now. They weren't done in FY nineteen, but they still need, these projects still need to be done. And, and the way that we support a bond ordinance is that we borrow as we spend. We, we're not going to spend the full twelve million dollars all upfront. We're not going to get a bond for twelve million dollars.
No, I, I understand that, that's, that's my question. You have to excuse my ignorance. But if that money was in the capital budget in two nineteen and we're now spending it in under the two twenty?
We're not spending it.
You're putting an ordinance through to draw it down?
Okay, well, we're, we're putting it in for FY twenty.
Okay, but it was taken from two nineteen and carried over?
Yes.
So we carried, that's, that's what I tried to figure out, so that you can actually take money in the capital budget, carry it over. So that was figured in, in the, the current budget? In the current capital budget?
It's not, it shouldn't be in the current capital budget because it was already in FY nineteen budget.
So when, so when you do the ordinance, you get it approved, that money goes into the two twenty capital budget?
It goes into, it doesn't go into the capital budget. That will be approved from FY nineteen.
Is it considered the nineteen, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget? Let me ask you that.
When you do your, when you do your budgeting for now, for FY twenty, you're gonna have a new capital budget?
Right, it's FY nineteen.
Okay, with other things, other than what's in this FY nineteen budget?
But I'm trying to figure out where that, you're gonna have that money to draw it down on from two nineteen, but we're now working on the two twenty.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
So we haven't passed a law?
To clarify, this was actually introduced in this fiscal year that you're working on. It has a nineteen number because during the calendar time, it was two thousand and nineteen, and now it's twenty twenty. But we're still in the same fiscal cycle which runs from July to July. This was done back in August.
The funding was in two nineteen.
There was no funding.
It was in the capital budget in two nineteen. It was budgeted in the capital budget, right?
But it's, what, in the capital budget isn't used for expenditures? Bond ordinance, so you go out the bottle for this money. It's not like it's here in.
Counsel, uh, counsel.
But we need to, we need to count, we need the money in the capital budget to make the payments.
So, so counsel, uh, counsel vice president, maybe what you're saying is, you are correct when you say that the funding was set aside from the, um, from the operating budget. We have to set aside five percent and that was in the nineteen budget.
Okay.
Yeah, so the money is there for, from the nineteenth. So you are correct when you're saying that, are we spending from, was this already budgeted in the twenty nineteen budget? Yes, you are correct. However.
You have, you have to budget the payments.
Exactly, well, five percent, five percent of the, of the total, of the overall bond.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have, and because this is, as Janet has mentioned, it is the twenty nineteen capital that was approved last year in the twenty nineteen capital approved. We have, we have yet to discuss the twenty twenty capital budget, which is the budget that was presented to you, but we have not even got there yet. This is the twenty nineteen capital, correct Janet?
Yes.
So yes, and the money, the five percent that is required by law, it was set aside in the twenty nineteen budget.
Was a down payment.
Yes, which is a down payment.
This is Neil Gerswin, he's our financial advisor, and I thought maybe he could explain it better.
Yeah, uh, essentially in, in last year, in the fiscal nineteen budget, you approved in the, in the capital budget, a, a whole series of projects. In doing so, you authorized those projects and you also appropriated that five percent that you referred to. So in, in last year's budget, there was that six hundred and something thousand dollars appropriated. And the balance of the approval is simply approving the projects and therefore authorizing the administration to then come back at some point in the future, usually the succeeding fiscal year, and saying, these are the projects that you approved last year that we would now like to have approval to go out and actually do the projects. And as the projects are done and as the money's spent, then the city would borrow the money. And in terms of your, your budget that you're about to be discussing, the fiscal twenty budget, there won't be any debt service payments on these authorizations, so you don't need to appropriate any cash in the upcoming, in the current year's budget for that purpose.
Uh, nineteen dash four six is a bond ordinance provided for values twenty nineteen acting as an improvement to the sewer utilities. The city of Trenton County Mercer, State of New Jersey, incorporating nine hundred and sixty thousand and four, authorizing the issuance of nine hundred and sixty thousand bonds ago of the city to finance the cost thereof. Ordinance nineteen dash eight three is amendment chapter two dash one at sect three, expanding the number of city assistants, city attorneys, and legal assistants in the Department of Law necessary to support the city attorney. And ordinance number nineteen dash eight five is an ordinance continuing certain positions, fixing salary ranges, air court, and setting forth certain regulations for the implementation of these ranges for estimated local twenty two eighty one, new treatment plan superintendent. Those numbers on this going to be amended to one twenty five to one hundred and sixty one thousand as a holder upon by the council at their last meeting. That will be recorded on this docket. The resolutions that are being presented to you is resolution forty dash one is setting the salary for the municipal clerk at eighty nine thousand and sixty dollars.
I apologize. I have something I'd like to say about this. You know, quite frankly, I think the salary outlined here is way too low. You know, Mr. Harris, you're an asset to the city. You bring a significant amount, amount of knowledge and understanding and wisdom. You've been extraordinarily helpful to me personally as a first term councilman. And for DCA to meddle in our affairs in the way that they are by not only increasing the salary by two percent is just ridiculous. You are worth way more than this. You are a longstanding professional. You have the certifications over and above what you are required to have, which is a testament to your professionalism and experience. And DCA, shame on DCA, for only allowing a two percent cap. Quite frankly, their involvement should not be, I believe, as setting salaries in this way. I think what we were requesting as a council was fair, was the market price. And I think that if they were concerned about the stability of the clerk's office and the person who's in the clerk's office, they would give you a salary that was competitive. And I don't think that this salary is competitive. So, you know, I wish there was something that we could do. If there is something we can do, I would love to have the law department share with us what we can do. But I, I just think it's ridiculous that they are meddling in our affairs in the way that they are. Quite frankly, the mayor's office was able to give their directors a competitive salary and raise their salary to, you know, what I believe was a competitive salary. And the clerk's office is one of the most important offices in this city. You support seven members of council. You have a staff. I think it's only fair that you are paying ten amount to the, to the directors' salaries. And so, let's get in the insight, if there's anything we can do to, you know, to, to increase this, if we can write a letter to DCA. You know, I know we probably want to give you the salary increase that we can right now in terms of approving this, but this is just unacceptable.
Mr. Harris, I thought that, because the way that they had stunted it, that we had to first adopt the salary range and then come back and fix.
That is correct. So you did approve the salary ordinance, same range. And then you did submit a requested salary to a resolution, proper procedure as required by law in DCA. The waiver was submitted to them for their approval and they essentially said, no, we will give you two percent.
So the, the fact is that DCA does not tell the council how to fix a salary. I noticed that when things were done improperly, when the mayor took it upon himself to increase the salaries of the directors, they followed no procedure. They did not submit any waiver. DCA did not even know that the salaries were being increased, but yet and still, they accepted those salaries. And they find the, the residents, the taxpayers who pay those salaries. So we followed all the correct procedures. When they came back and said, we have fixed the salary, that we shouldn't have fixed it at that point, that we should have voted just for the range. Then we took that back. We, we complied with them. But they cannot, under any circumstances, tell the legislative body how to raise the salary. They just don't have that authority. Their authority is fiscal oversight for the entire city, but not to come in here and set salaries. They just can't do that. And so, you know, I'll leave it up to this body, but I believe that we should fix the range to what we had, uh, fixed it to because we, we need to send a message to them, you know? They're doing what they want to do, you know? And just to even dig a little deeper into it, you have the head of the local finance board, which is Melanie Walters, and she is also the director of DCA, and she's doing things that does not, that is not in compliance. So I, I just think that this body has to make a decision. And, and I've already made one based on a five to two vote that we do not sign that application for those five million dollars that they gave us in transitional aid and move forward doing the business of the city, because for some reason or another, these people have overstepped their bounds. And your salary was supposed to be increased every time the assessment officer, uh, tax assessor's salary was increased. That, that's what they told us at Rutgers. They said that the clerk's salary should be set and fixed and increased every time the tax assessor's salary is increased. But that has not happened the whole time you've been here, has it?
The tax collector, if the tax collector and the tax assessor get a raise, then by law, the clerk is entitled to that same increase and vice versa. That's like a little triage thing there.
That's what they told us at the, at the Rutgers University. But has that happened since you've been here?
I do not know that the tax collector and tax assessors have received increases in their salaries.
So, so President McBride, I'd like to make a motion to, yeah, this, first, let me ask. What was the?
I think it was ninety, what did we put down? We had one oh six, nine fifty, yeah.
So, I'd like to make a motion to amend this resolution to change the salary to one oh six, uh, one oh, yeah, one oh six. Nine fifty. I'd like to make a motion for that.
I'll second it. Move by Mr. Blakely and seconded by Ms. Corbo Wilson. Ready for the vote?
Yes, we are.
Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Corbo Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Nusha?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Fawn?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes, and I will say this. I am glad my colleague has changed his mind because when we voted to give you that one oh six, he voted against it, so I appreciate you coming around. I really do, because the clerk is definitely, um, worth his weight here in the city, so I appreciate that, Mr..
It's, it's my pleasure and, you know, if the directors were able to receive their money, I don't see any reason why you shouldn't either. And so, that's all I have to say. I just, it's all about retention.
The back end of this is though, is I don't write my own paycheck. So it would be really dependent upon the departments that do that to make any necessary adjustments. And I, I don't know to which level they are going to battle with the DCA for this increase, so I appreciate that.
So Madam President, I'd say that that, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fine, the city received would be two years' salary, please, Mr. Harris.
Exactly, because we paid a great penalty for the other raises and so they should be prepared to.
And I would just say this. I know that Mr. Harris, with his experiences and his insight and his education, is in great demand across the city, not across the city, across the state for his services. And, you know, this is about making sure that we have longevity. It's such an important role in the city. Making sure that, you know, we're paying him fairly and competitively so that, you know, he stays. And it just can't be about recruitment. It has to also be about retention. And I think everybody, as shown by this unanimous vote, everybody sees that you bring such value. And if the DCA is interested in positively contributing to ensuring that we have, that we retain our great employees, our talent, then they should do the right thing and reconsider what they've done. And, you know, I think it speaks clearly that you have a unanimous decision on the council that really doesn't agree on much, that we all agreed on Mr. Harrison's deserving of, of this rate. Thank you.
Resolution twenty dash two is a resolution rejecting proposals received for legal services, insurance, statutory judgment, action, penalty. That was submitted by the Department of Administration. Submitted by the Department of Law under John Morelli is the director, resolution number twenty dash three, authorizing the city of Trenton to accept the sum of nine thousand eight hundred and four dollars in settlement of a civil suit in case of City of Trenton for Solitaria Recycling Solutions, which is a central Jersey waste company.
This particular resolution is the resolution where the city left the computers outside on the loading dock and then they were taken away by this recycle, recycling company. And so we were able to recoup some of the money back from the recycling company to help toward, to more computers.
The next resolutions were presented by the Department of Finance. Resolution twenty dash four is adopting an estimated tax levy for the purpose of issuing twenty twenty first quarter tax bills. Resolution twenty dash five is.
Twenty dash four, can we roll call this one?
Roll call twenty dash four.
I'd like, I'd like to ask a question. How much is the tax levy, but what would be the percentage of that tax levy? Somebody wants to ask this.
So, um, um, counsel president, uh, mayor president, the, the purpose of this resolution is actually to, uh, to send out the, uh, the tax bills. It does not reflect an increase in taxes for this year. We have not gotten to that point yet, so what we're doing is that we are actually sending the tax bills based on the numbers from last year, from the last quarter of last year.
Resolution twenty dash five is authorizing increases in emergency appropriations for the fiscal year twenty twenty temporary budgets in the city of Trenton current fund. That going to need to be a roll call as well because it was an appropriation. It would require five votes from the council. Uh, resolution twenty dash six, authorizing cancellation of trust grant balances from the community development block grant amounts of five hundred seventy eight thousand, one hundred ninety six dollars, sixty seven cents and five hundred six thousand, one hundred thirty five dollars in amounts.
I have a question.
Who's writing it, counsel?
Thank you, President McBride. Can we have some explanation of what this means? Does this mean what I think it means?
Mr. Delius is here because I don't see Mr. Zalinski here, so, um, if Mr., if the director of the housing can answer it.
I mean, it looks like, just from layman's term, but I may be wrong, that, you know, we, um.
I'm sorry.
That for resolution twenty dash six, authorizing the cancellation of trust grant balances, does that, does that mean like we've left a million dollars on the table?
Uh, this is what's, the CDBG.
Yeah.
And the money is not longer available and the city.
Why not?
HUD took it away.
Oh, HUD took it away, okay.
So.
I thought that, what year was this that HUD took this away? Because I thought we got back twenty eighteen, uh, twenty seventeen and the only part of twenty sixteen, um, there was a small part of twenty sixteen taken. So we need some clarity on this.
That's more than a million dollars.
Did you get the detail of the, uh?
No, I didn't receive any. I'm looking at it here. It's not in my, uh, my docket.
The person who does it, um, had detail behind it of what years that was from. But from what I, what I work on, review this stuff. It's, uh, the stuff that is not in IDIS, which is the HUD version of their, their grant accounting. And it's not in IDIS, it's not under.
Thank you. I didn't receive, thank you, uh, counsel. What is this? What was, yeah, it's not on the back of mine, but I'm curious, what exactly this is supposed to be spent for, used for? This community, uh, this community development block grant. What is it used for?
This is HUD, this is CDBG.
I know, I know what it is.
What, what, what does the account sound?
It doesn't say anything. It doesn't explain. It just.
On the back, it has a bunch of account numbers, but it's not breaking down what those accounts were supposed to address, where that money was supposed to go. Was it supposed to go to small organizations? Or is it supposed to go to any of the senior centers? It's not breaking it down.
But that doesn't really tell me anything either, as per, you know, President McBride.
So.
So you're looking for a description, not just the line item?
I want to know exactly what we didn't spend a million dollars for. Like, you know, what exactly were some of?
Or is this a part of the frozen money? Is it?
No, this is from ten, nine, six, eight, nine, and ten. Six, eight, nine, and ten. The money is not available anymore to be stacked.
Because it wasn't spent down properly.
And it wasn't spent, and, and the money, HUD's not giving us that money. This is not the money that they held back. We should look at math. This is old, this is six, eight.
This is six, six, eight, nine, and ten.
So, so I have a question. What are we doing today in the city?
We just got our funds released.
No, no, but I just want to make sure that we never have a million dollars. We have a lot of issues in the city of Trenton that we could use funds to address. And so, I just want to make sure that we have programs and standards and policies to ensure that this never happens again. So can someone tell me what exactly will cause this not to happen again? Because this is really shameful that we have a million dollars on the table that we're not able to spend on behalf of the people that we represent.
Well, first of all, a, a councilman, uh, uh, I would just like to say that having an economic, uh, uh, director should be addressing this because HUD laid out specifics. The specifics were that they picked, they, they put those RFPs out for all of our senior centers and our community centers and our public libraries. That was two years ago that they gave us that directive. And since then, I have heard nothing about the community centers, RFPs, the senior centers, and nor the public library. And they gave us a directive, but I keep seeing them chiseled down off of money, going where HUD said not to go. HUD said, do not pick all these small organizations because we do not have the manpower to oversee the HUD regulations. So, but I haven't heard anything about any of those projects that HUD told us to get done.
It was my understanding that we were going to be doing, redoing the senior centers. So I've gone to senior centers throughout the city and, you know, they asked, when are we going to be able to enhance these senior centers? Because they're crummy, or they can stand to be enhanced. And I said, have no fear. The city has decided that they are going to use CBDG funds to, federal government funds, to renovate them. Well, what's going on? What's going on with that? So that's two questions. What do we have here in terms of what we're doing to make sure that we never cancel these funds again? And what are we doing with the current funds and particularly the plans around the senior centers and other areas that we were going to do in the public libraries?
So let me, uh, answer some of that briefly. And if I could, I'll come, like to prepare something and come back to council with a more comprehensive report, a little bit more research. The, as Janet mentioned, I didn't prepare this one for finance. This is the Department of Finance on my mind. But if this is old money from ten plus sixteen?
Six, oh six?
Oh six. This is old, old money that was not associated with the money that was frozen, which was fifteen, sixteen, seventeen was the voluntary grant reduction, eighteen, and then nineteen. That money has recently been unfrozen by HUD, but we had a number of grant conditions that we complied with. The last one was hiring staff. Right, we just did not, as the council president, continue, we didn't have the staff to manage the program. So that we have in place and we satisfied HUD that we have staff in place of that. Our architectural consultant has been preparing bid specifications for the rehab of the senior centers, the rec centers and the like. And, you know, when those are done, we will issue requests for proposals to, or bids rather, to contractors to actually do the physical work of making those approvals. We can do that now that the money has been released and available for spending.
How long should that take?
Again, I could work on an accounting to be more specific, but the architect has been underway. I think we've seen some drafts of preliminary of the specifications. So we should be positioned to do that in the very near future.
Fantastic. And if you can, if not, you just wait until the presentation that you filed.
Yeah, I don't want to speak off the cuff. I want to give you specifics, right? And I don't want to give bad. And I don't want to give bad information, you know, to get this wasn't an item, uh, in my department tonight, but I have to give you what I can.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I'd love to see a presentation in terms of a status update on, on the, uh...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Sure.
Uh, the next two resolutions were presented by the Department of Health and Human Services. Uh, Number Twenty Dash Seven is authorizing the execution of memorandum of agreement between the City of Trenton Health Department and other local health departments, and the Mercer County Division of Public Health for the Division of Public Health Mutual Aid.
Councilwoman, did you want to speak to the, um, to this resolution based on, we were supposed to get some kind of clarity on the list of municipalities that was involved in this? Mr. Um, I think I was Mr. Cruz to give us that information.
If you recall, Mr. Cruz, they had the, the wrong list was attached. It had all these towns, and you were supposed to give us the current.
Correct, yes.
We didn't get it.
Yeah, so, Madam, Madam President, so, um, uh, the Director actually walked over to the clerk's office, and they literally did the exchange at, at the clerk's office. So, the documentation that should be attached to your current, uh, document should be in the right order.
He gave us the file, but we don't have it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was the two resolutions, Two Oh Seven and Two Oh Eight. Yes, Two Oh Seven and Two, Twenty Dash Seven and Twenty Dash Eight.
This is just the docket of resolutions. All of those other sheets of paper are all in the supplemental information that you guys emailed to you.
I didn't, I didn't open up the docket because I already had the docket. There's only misinformation in it on this.
That's correct.
So, Mr. Harris, so, this list here on Twenty Dash Seven, it gave us a list of twenty municipalities or more. Let's see here. It gave us thirty, it gave us thirty-one municipalities. And what we were asking is, if we were going into shared services with our one health officer that we had, how could we share, how could we share one health officer with thirty-one other municipalities? And-
Right, but, so, um, 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 Madam President, so that was the confusion that, uh, that was caused when the wrong documents were attached to the original resolution that you saw at the Tuesday, at the Thursday meeting?
Right.
So, um, that list of the thirty-plus municipalities is actually for the public service announcement, and that should have been flip-flopped onto the proper resolutions. And apparently, that is what took place after-
Okay, so the res- so it has been fixed, it right here, Mr. Harris. I don't have it.
This is, this is the thirty that you're referring to, which is attached to Tool Eight.
Eight now, okay.
Not Twenty Oh Seven.
Okay. All right, well, I didn't have the change because this is what I had on the review, and this is what I have now. The change is still here. This is still Two Oh Seven, and it's still attached.
Well, that's what you got at the top of the view, but all of this, this one was sent to the governing body with the official docket.
Mercer, Morris, and Summers that.
Probably an email.
Okay, and the second question to that is this. You want us to vote on shared services with these other municipalities, but we don't have any type of agreement from the other municipalities. Where is their agreement for us? Because it seems as though Trenton always wants to jump out ahead and do all these shared services, but we don't have an agreement from the other municipalities. So, the municipalities that you want us to go into a shared agreement with, where is their shared agreement? Have, have those other municipalities already voted on this agreement, and where, where is it?
I'm not sure whether the other municipalities have voted yet. However, um, the, the intention, the objective for this is that if our health officer is away for two weeks-
We understand all of that.
Okay.
The question is, where is their agreement?
It's, I can just say it's forthcoming.
Okay, so-
It's in, it's in, um, in progress.
Thank you.
President Brian.
Councilor.
Yeah, I'm... So, this, either this resolution has to reflect that this will take place when we receive their, um, their-
Signed agreements.
Signed agreements, or it gets held, held off until we get them. So, you might, you know, I see if you could amend this to say, and list off the towns, we're waiting for those, um, agreements, Ron?
Yes.
And that this will take effect as soon as we receive all of them, and we would need you to report to us when you come in.
And so, it needs to be, it needs to really be tabled because it's, we shouldn't be voting on something that we don't have any proof that the other municipalities, that we need something tangible.
So, since this is a resolution, it's not an ordinance. Since the resolution is a recommendation, I think we can put an amendment in there stating that this resolution will take effect once council has been, um...
So, we need to amend it?
Yeah, we need to amend it.
What about the contractual language that they had in here about us accepting the fact that there were paydays to be taken, uh, time to be taken off of pay, and the council was actually going to address that when that is nothing for the council to address?
That's not on this one.
Yes, that's Two Oh Seven.
Two Oh...
So, I mean, this is just nothing more than, than if our, if our health officer takes a vacation.
My, my question, Director, was, and you're, you're right, because I was looking at Two Oh Six. Um, it said, "The City of Trenton recognizes that local health agencies serving Mercer County are challenged from time to time," blah, 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 and it goes on and on. So, I think it took that out.
Did you take it out, Mr. Harris? Did you, uh, did you check that? We have to check that.
No, there was, no, this is the resolution that was presented on Thursday, you know, with the amendment.
Oh, no, there was a memorandum that was attached.
Yes, it was here right here.
Council approval of this resolution will enable, enable our own health officer to be authorized to take time away from the Health Division for vacation leave or any other leave, so that she can be yours accumulated leave time. We cannot authorize any of that because we do not, that, that, that's contract negotiations, you're in the bargaining unit.
No, the, it's not, we're not asking you to authorize her to take time, her to, to, to use her times. We're asking you to authorize her to be away, her... We're asking you to authorize coverage for her while she is away, using her vacation time. In other words, uh, health officers-
Okay, so that, that's why we said to Mr. Cruz that this, this, this sentence, this had to be changed because the way this is phrased, it looks like the resolution is going to enable our own health officer to be authorized to take time from.
Yes.
It doesn't, and then it says, "So that she can use accumulated leave time"? Who is she?
Our health officer.
Okay, so, this doesn't address the fact that someone else will step up to the, this is-
Okay, so-
You know, so you have to be careful that you don't get caught up here because this, all of this is covered in a contract that's negotiated. We can't get involved in that. We can't.
No, yeah, we're just asking for a memorandum of agreement among all the, the, uh, health officers.
Do you need to delete that portion of the memo and resend the memo, like, tomorrow morning?
Absolutely.
Because this memorandum has to be updated. This can't, yeah.
Just remove that.
I don't have a problem with that at all.
Kathy, you're listening to us. Okay, so we, so I had asked to have this-
Correct.
We can strike that.
The, the whole-
Number ten, is it just, is it-
It needs to be updated, though.
Before Thursday, before the vote.
Yeah.
We can do it tomorrow morning.
Okay.
We'll do it tomorrow morning and bring it down to, um, Clerk Paris in the morning.
That's, that's a memorandum, but it's requiring to rescind the resolution. We're agreeing to that memorandum. Okay, so, so that language is not good. That's interfering in workers' rights.
So, the memo is only explaining-
Contract with the time.
The memo is only explaining the purpose of the resolution. So, if, the problem is that specific paragraph with the three sentences, we can delete that. It does not affect the overall, uh, language on the resolution.
I don't want somebody to come back to us and saying we're violating, you know-
And, and, right, and then you want us to add the clause that it will take effect once all of the memoranda are signed.
Once council has been given, I mean, signed copies of those agreements, yes. You guys want to share with us?
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm asking, Mr. Harris, see, we're supposed to be voting on the resolution.
Right.
This memorandum of understanding should not, we should not be voting on this at all.
No, 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 the, the memo is saying that council approval of this resolution, and then it has those terms, and that needs to be taken out.
So, then, my recognition-
Those terms need to be placed on the resolution.
Would be, the memorandum is the constructed documents that was put together, I would assume mutually, between the different municipalities.
Yes.
If you don't agree in that language, then don't authorize the, to-
The resolution.
The resolution entering into the agreement and say, "We would like for you to change this agreement to something that is more palatable."
Yes.
You, you don't have the ability to dictate the terms collectively for the other municipalities. Only you can accept what's presented in front of you.
So, so, so there are two, there are two memorandums attached to the resolution. The one is the memorandum of agreement, which is pretty much the contract, and then there is the memorandum that the Director, uh, uh-
And so, once we vote on the resolution, we would have voted on the entire package. And so, that is why I'm saying that I believe that it should be tabled until our concerns are met because the, to vote on the resolution is to vote on the entire agreement.
Uh, you know what? So, so, let's just pull it off of the agenda, and then, uh, I'll have the Director and I sit down and take a look at it, if that is the, the request of...
So, I think we should, I can't, but just pull it.
Yeah. Just remove it from the agenda, please.
You pull it?
Yeah, go pull it.
So, Twenty Dash Seven, Mr. Harris, should be pulled.
Twenty Dash Eight is a resolution authorizing the use of competitive contract in lieu of public bidding for an on-air health education marketing re, relic, relic condition?
Regarding leg conditions.
Okay, that should be called, they're very same, regarding leg conditions. Uh, Twenty Dash Nine is a resolution authorizing the approval of qualifications for the following firms for the restoration of the Jackson Street Bridge. Resolution Twenty Dash Ten, presented by Housing and Economic Development, authorizing the acceptance of, of the offer between the-
Excuse me, Mr. Harris, I have a question, um, um, for Maria on Twenty Nine. If we are going to, um, to the restoration of the Jackson Street Bridge, are they going to add additional lighting?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sure. Um, by the way, before, I'm sorry, I must add to that that we are not just going to wait until the restoration, but we are, uh, negotiating with some contractors to see if we can add additional, if we can add lighting now, before even the restoration, uh, occurs. But we are trying for that plan not to be something that we need to, uh, remove later on, but that it will be part of the restoration, that it will be good for the restoration.
Okay.
Resolution Number Twenty Dash Ten is authorizing the acceptance of the offers between the City of Trenton and State of New Jersey Department of Transportation for the purchase of easements known as parcel TR two four zero on the Route Twenty Nine Cash Street onto Calhoun Street Drainage Improvement Project. Resolution Twenty Dash Eleven is authorizing the payment of contract with East Heating and Cooling Incorporated, which was awarded on an emergency basis for the Department of Public Works, Division of Public Property, in an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. And that was for the Department of Public Works. These resolutions for Department of Water and Sewer. Uh, Resolution Number Twenty Dash Ten is accepting a bid and awarding a contracted highway for the Highway LLC for the furnishing of temporary a two-minute stockpile patching material for the patch in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Resolution Twenty Dash Thirteen is accepting a bid and awarding a contracted capital supply construction Productions Incorporated for the furnishing and delivery of copper tubing in an amount not to exceed seventy thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars ninety-five cents.
President Brian.
Yes.
Um, this is a question for, um, I guess the VA, since he's the senior person here. Where's Director Pico?
Um, Mr. Pico unfortunately had to leave Widow Margarine this morning, or this afternoon, and he went to the doctors.
Mr. Pico was no longer on the roster for the city. There was a vote taken, and Mr. Pico's, uh, vote failed, and so-
From my understanding, I thought Mr. Pico was then reappointed by, um, by, uh, the, um, Mayor for his role. He was appointed thereafter, according to the press. According to what my understanding, he is still-
He doesn't have that authority to do that.
So-
Under the law.
Is Mr., whoops, is, is Mr. Pico the Director or, or not? Because his name is still here.
He's, he is the acting Director, yes.
After a vote was taken, and he was voted down.
We're still looking at that issue.
There's no issue to look into. The vote is a vote. The legislative body is a legislative body. His term expired, he came up for a vote, and he was voted down. So, what is there to look into unless the complete State of New Jersey has turned, changed the Wagner's Act?
So, at, at, at the request, uh, well, uh, uh, the Mayor can appoint an individual after the term is up, uh, a day after the term is up. So, the Mayor is reappointing for another ninety days.
Now, where's the statute that states that?
Yeah, you need to show me some facts, and you need to show me under-
Yes, the Law Department can probably do it.
Law Department, can you tell us the statute that Mr. Cruz is-
I cannot give you that statute because I don't know it, because we're still looking into that issue.
Right, but the, um, I'm sure that the, tonight, you probably cannot do that.
Yeah.
But I am sure that the Law Department can go back to their office and do their research, and perhaps throw out a memo to the council.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, I have a question.
Yeah.
Because I see, um, something on the Mayor's office, and it says he was appointing him as an interim, interim.
Correct.
There is no such title that's allowed in the city. It's either acting or it's director. So, this is incorrect.
And when those ninety days are up, those ninety days are up, he has to come in front of this body to be either voted up or voted down. But either way, if he's voted up, he comes back on. If he's voted down, he cannot, under any circumstances, receive another paycheck from the City of Trenton. Now, um, I understand what's going on up in Washington, and nobody respects the Congress up there, and they're just doing what they want to do, but on my watch, you're not, no.
President Brian. I've supported Pico. I, I would like him here. But the fact of the matter is, the fact that if he is the Director, which people are saying he's not, but if he is the Director, he should be here. I think part of the issue previously was that he wasn't here. And so, I have questions. I'd like to know, I'd like to have answers. Is there anybody from the Water Department here? I mean, that's, that, that's just unacceptable. Like, the fact that there's nobody from the Water Department here, and we're spending tens of thousands of dollars, and we don't have someone here who can walk us through. I mean, we know they're not going to come on Thursday because they have refused to come on Thursday. So, I understand that he's not feeling well, but is what he has contagious? I mean, is it people in his division have the same issue? Somebody should be here. And this is somebody who supported him. I voted for him quite publicly. But you're making it very difficult to support someone, or the fact that nobody on this whole team is here. It's just ridiculous. And particularly when we have tens of thousands of dollars of, of million, oh, no, with the, with the bond stuff, millions of dollars. Give me a break. This is- Give me a break, this is ridiculous.
Council President?
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Well, I just have one thing to say. We can't even, I, Pico should not come on Thursday until the Law Department-
Fair enough.
Comes back with the statutes that supports that he does. All right? Do you?
Yes, I'm tuned in.
Twenty dash fourteen is a res-
Actually, you have, I think, Mr. Shad had a question. Last Tuesday, we brought back the meeting, McIntyre filled in for Pico. On Thursday, Pico didn't show up, nobody knew why he didn't show up. The VA, they need answers, he didn't know, no, no one knew where he's at. At tonight, he's not here, he's got a migraine. And we voted because he's, at least he could give somebody in the Water Department, like, the Police Department sends Captain Dorell in to fill in, and she's not in, we gotta fill in. But we're spending millions and millions of dollars here, and we have no answers. And these are three meetings now, he didn't show. I think he's got an explanation for council, and we have to get to the bottom of it, and we did vote him out. He, that he's not reliable, and he's not showing up. So, I think we need an answer before we do anything more for Mr. Pico. He did respond to me, I had a water problem. He did respond to me yesterday on a water complaint, just to tell you, he did, uh-
But, but lawfully, he should not have.
Right, but I'm just telling you, he did respond to me. Again, like you said, he should have been.
Resolution twenty dash four and four, accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Waterworks Supply Company for the furnishing and delivery of Metropolitan M dash ninety-four ductile iron, iron hydrants in an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents.
Can we roll call that, please?
Roll call, twenty dash four and four. The following ordinances are being presented to you for, uh, first reading and introduction. Ordinance number twenty dash one, amending the city, city, Trenton City Code to add chapter twenty-two anti-nepotism policy.
I have a question, I have a few questions. Um, so, I understand the spirit of this ordinance, uh, I think it's way too broad. Uh, it basically says that anybody, and if I'm incorrect, please correct me. It basically states that anyone who is appointed to any position in the city cannot have a relative work, uh, in the city. And that includes spouse, child, parent, sibling, grandparent, grandchild, father-in-law, mother-in-law, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, stepfather, stepmother, stepsibling, half-brother, half-sister, nephew, niece, first cousin, aunt, uncle, foster child, domestic partner, or cohabitant. If somebody is appointed to the, say, landmarks, commissions for historic preservation, right? It doesn't really strike me as a very high-power position. It's very important, but it doesn't necessarily strike me as a very influential position, where, you know, you are throwing your weight around to get influence. That shouldn't preclude your half-brother, who, who may be interested in the position in the city, from getting a job in the city. I mean, I understand the spirit of it, but this really calls for excluding so many of the people in this city. We are only seven point five square miles, uh, eighty-five thousand people. And please don't mind me for using President McBride, but you have like two hundred cousins? No, seriously, no, seriously, I'm being serious, she's, she has like two hundred cousins. I don't think her cousin should be precluded from, uh, from taking a job, even as council president. Like, if, if, if she has very highly qualified relatives who, independent of her relationship, their relationship to President McBride, should still have an opportunity to serve the city. Notwithstanding someone on a board like the Project Application Review Committee. I don't even know what that is. Whoever's on that committee, their cousin, or their half-brother, or their half-sibling, or their aunt, or uncle, should have the ability to serve this city. And so, like I said, I understand, um, you know, it, it really strikes me as overly broad, and I hope my colleagues vote against this, because I think that we would really be limiting ourselves to selecting the very best, uh, and the very, um, most qualified people, who, because they're elected, or they're related to the Rent Stabilization Board member, they can't serve the City of Trenton. That's all I have to say about that.
Ordinance number, excuse me-
The only thing that I would just follow up with that is that I would just, um, ask that all my colleagues read it, in the, read the ordinance in its entirety, uh, and know that it only pertains to certain officials, relatives, not every employee. It specifically says appointed and elected officials, that we cannot have certain relatives working in the city. Because we want to make sure that all other employees who work in the city feel that their interests are being considered, and that they are valued, and that there's no favoritism, and that there's no bias.
So, you're saying that your ordinance is pertaining to two groups of people, elected officials such as ourselves, and appointed of positions that are appointed by the mayor?
Correct. And so, uh, and, and that's pretty much, I would just ask that all our, uh, all, all the members on councils read it thoroughly, and be careful not to just focus on, uh, uh, certain language, but to know that it only, the rules only apply to the appointed officials and elected officials.
President McBride.
Okay.
Actually, so, I did read this, and I have great reading comprehension. If you look at definition B under twenty-two dash one, it says that an appointed official is "an individual appointed by the mayor and/or city council to any local government agency," as that term is defined within the statute. It includes, but it's not limited to, appointees to city departments and/or boards and commissions within the City of Trenton, as well as any other independent local authority or entity created by the City of Trenton. If you go down to the prohibited acts, in section twenty-two dash two prohibited acts, it states that "no person who is a relative or family member of any elected official or appointed official of the City of Trenton shall be considered for employment as an employee of the city." So, when you look at the definition of appointed official in section twenty-two dash one, it's exactly what I said it was.
And, and mo, mo, I just wanted to chime in, because most of the appointed positions are volunteered positions. So, the appointed positions that the council has should not weigh on whether or not, I, I think that's a little, that's a little, um, the, the, uh, catch twenty-two there, because if the, if we appoint board members for the zoning, the planning, and the housing authority, none of those boards are compensated boards, those are all volunteer board, boards. And so, under the ethics, uh, law, it has to be something that, um, that a person will gain from that. For example, if I was appointed, if I went and took my position to use it for someone to get a job that would enhance my financial situation, then there's a problem. But if there's all volunteered boards, and no one is being compensated for that, like, when we appoint, what, what is the gain for us if there's no, if it's all volunteer?
Uh, um, everything, when you're talking about bias and favoritism, everything is not made to money, right? So, when you're in a position of power, as an elected official is, or, or have influence, like elected official or an appointed person, whether you are operating a, a, a volunteer position, or, hey, we're only making twenty thousand dollars, right? But our influence is greater, it's intangible. So, um, even, uh, what Mr. Blakely's, Councilman Blakely's characterization, that it's all employees, is not for all employees. It's to be abided by, applied to people who have power and influence to direct somebody's career, to, um, to impact their promotability, to suppress their access, and that's what, whether you are a manager, or you are an elected official, appointed official of a board, or rather, it's of a department, this is what this law is. And it applies, I believe, at one time, um, a, a family member of yours was considered to be on the board, and was taken to the Ethics Board, right? So, it, again, it only applies to people who are in power, who are elected and appointed personnel, period. And whether, it doesn't matter what position you, even if this, if we don't adopt this into our, um, our municipality, you still, we still are by, we are, we are still held to this standard, this is state statute, okay? However, the reason why I'm proposing to put it into, and adopt it into our municipality, because our employees should not have to go out fishing for, um, for the code that when they feel as though they've been, uh, pushed aside, or bias have been imposed on their promotability or access to certain, um, opportunities, that they don't have to go searching. That it's right there in our city code, right there on our, on our website, right there in the policy procedures of our city. And that's, that's what it's about.
President McBride.
Again, I just want to say, it's not all employees, that's, that's, that's a mischaracterization. It's just applied to elected and appointed personnel, rather, of any board, commission, or whatever.
So, just to be clear, um-
Rather it's pay or not.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Mm-hmm.
If somebody is on the board of the Project Application Review Committee, what restrictions does that person have? What relative, what restrictions do the relatives have of a board member of the Project Application Review Committee?
Well, I'm gonna tell you. Project Application Review, uh, uh, Committee, they have control as to, you know, what zoning permits and, uh, 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 construction things that people get in the city. So, if I'm, if I have my relative on the board, and, um, and, uh, the mayor, and I know that, uh, our uncle is about to buy some property over there in the Roble complex, and they come, uh, on the project with a construction board, then yes, that, that particular relative can, uh, can, uh, can be biased, and, and push that project through and vote for it, because it's a relative.
But, but, but by law, that person has to recuse themselves. If they, if there's a family member that is coming up for a vote, under the law that exists today, they have to recuse themselves, so-
Well, again, recusal does not fix the issue of any type of conflict, or, or any type of nepotism that's imposed, that, that can, can happen. Just because you can't, just because you, I mean, to say that you're on a board and you have conflict, to say that you're gonna accuse yourself of, of every vote, then why are you on the board?
No, you said if a family member, not every vote-
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, but-
For a particular family member, because if they don't, then they, then that person itself falls under, uh, could now, uh, complaint can be lodged, if they don't.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, you can always-
So, that's why I'm saying, you know-
Again, right, adoption into our municipality is critical, it doesn't preclude us today, even if without it, it doesn't preclude it. But however, there has been a, is a need here in the city that, um, that, uh, that, that has been vacant, addressing these very insensitive issues. And again, it's to limit folks', um, power and influence. There are certain families in the city who have dominated and have gotten positions across the board, and have prevented, prevented growth, and, and, and prevented opportunity for, for others. So, this is what this, uh, ordinance attempted to curtail.
Let me ask you a question, I mean, this is my final question, because I think we're, we're, um, we're getting, you know, we're beating a dead horse, but I want to ask a question. If, um, if, say, if you're on the library board, say you get appointed to the library board, can you not be reappointed to the, or you cannot be appointed to the library board if you have a person who work in the city, who works in the city? Like, say if you have a, there's a police officer, and the person's wife is a trained librarian, and they're interested in actually being a librarian, or not a train, uh, not a police board, a person on the school board. They're on the school board, and their spouse is a librarian. Would that person being on the school board preclude someone from serving on the unpaid library board because of their experience, insight, and education? Would they be totally not looked at because they're married to a school board member?
No, but, I mean-
Yes, or that's what-
It, it, it's absolutely, it's a possibility, depending on, that conflict has to be assessed. That conflict has to be assessed.
What was that, sir?
How do you, how do you assess that, when you do background checks to see who's married to who, who's related to who, who's-
I mean, I know I got some half-brothers in Trenton that I've never met before, but now they're not gonna know we, because they're not gonna be able to get hired.
Well, you don't know them.
Well, I was advised when I first ran for office, that when you talk to one person in City of Trenton, you're talking to ten different families. That's what I was told. So, you know, this is going to, this would certainly affect a lot of people, you know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to pick up.
Well, nepotism, I just want to say lastly, nepotism is a serious issue, uh, across all industries, in the public sector, the private sector, government sector. It, 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 uh, our, our state has nepotism policy, as well as, um, uh, our county, and most of the municipal, municipal municipalities. And, uh, as we move forward in the city, if you want to build a very, um, a good city that has good governance, that has good governance, and it's not, and we're not operating willy-nilly, we're not gonna attract Fortune five hundred companies, no one's gonna invest here if we don't have the, the type of policies that protect our employees, that protect people who come here and do business. Our contractors, people have to feel safe, and people have to feel as though that they are not being discriminated against, and it's not even biases when it comes to promotions and favoritism, and, uh, nepotism has been, uh, chronicled. So, what else have you heard?
I agree with your nepotism piece of this, right? But what I don't, the piece that I don't agree with is those volunteered boards. I don't agree with a person that's serving, because we, it's, it's, we're hard-pressed here in this city to get people to show up at these boards, to get them to come out when they should. And so, I don't, I, I could agree with the elected officials, and I could agree with the appointed positions, but I can't agree with the, uh, board appointments, if you have, if there's an open board appointment, because on each board, there are several members, and if one person is related to you, does not get the entire board to vote in that direction, if there's five or more people on the board, for example, if there's one person there that is related to me, and then there's six other individuals on the board, I just don't believe that that one person can influence that whole, uh, board-
I'm gonna give you an example of-
To, you know, I just want to finish.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and so, I'm just saying that the piece that, the piece of this that I don't agree with, I, 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 I like the anti-nepotism for me, for appointed, uh, positions, but I just don't think that the board selectors, the people that we select to sit on these boards should be, I, I just think that, that's a little sticky. I don't think that they should be held to the same, uh, um, account that, that, that we are as far as, um, not being able to work if a, a family member can't get a job in the city if they sit on a volunteer board. I think that's a little, little stern.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna give you a, a more solid, uh, concern when it comes to nepotism on boards. Uh, let's talk about the Capital City Redevelopment Corporation Board, okay? And you gotta understand the mission of the board, and that's why you have the Ethics Boards in place. The Capital City Redevelopment Board really allocates, uh, funding, and it's millions and millions of dollars, it's a redevelopment, right? And when family members, there are, if certain family members sit on that board, they have the power and influence to direct certain projects, certain development corporations- they have the power and influence to direct certain projects, certain development corporations, to their family members. So, you want to be, make, make, make certain that those individuals, now, if I, if I'm a city council member, you wouldn't want me to be able to have my, my, my brother sitting on the Capital City Redevelopment Corporation. There was a big issue in the city when a certain influential, uh, uh, political, political, so to speak, uh, family member, daughter was, was appointed to the school board over the years. Because, because that individual, their family had contracts with the school board. So, these, this is the reason why these, these boards are very, can be very influential. And we have to take it seriously as to the implications if we choose to. It's not just so simple to say, oh, you know, it's gonna affect the overall range. It, it will not, I mean, you have the Capital, like, I just mentioned, the Capital City Redevelopment Corporation. When you put your family members on the school board, so they could be there to help, direct, and influence so that you can get contracts from the school board, so in the Capital City Redevelopment Corporation, so you can get private state property, let's see what else, what's-
Isn't CCRC a state board?
Uh, no, no, it, it's a combination. It's on, it's a board that the governor appoints one member, um, the council appoints a couple of members, um, the mayor is on it, the mayor sits on it.
We don't appoint, end it to CCRC.
No, no, but my point is that-
We don't appoint to CCRC.
Well, CCRC is kind of inactive now, but the governor, but they're for development projects in the city, it's for redevelopment projects in the city. They're, they're inactive now, but they were, they were very, they're still active?
Yeah.
But it's a state, but it's a state board.
It's a state board.
Most members are appointed by the state. I think there is one representative of the city on that board, but it's not appointed by anybody in the city.
If I can, this Capital City Redevelopment Corporation is a state agency in, but not of Department of Treasury, created by statute in nineteen eighty-eight. CCRC is charged with facilitating redevelopment in the capital district of the city of Trenton. So, it is a state agency in, but not of the Department of Treasury.
But it feels, but it facilitates redevelopment in the city of Trenton, and I know certain individuals in my community who sit on that board, okay? And my neighbor who sat on that board, okay? And had great influence as to how those projects were divvied up in the city of Trenton. So, and it, and this is the same type of activity that, that what nepotism and proneness address. So, although it's not gonna apply, I mean, today, we operate very, you know, efficiently, um, and effectively, and we don't see a lot of, um, family members being hired, because everyone kind of, pretty much understands what nepotism is, and, and we know what it looks like, it's like pornography, you know it when we see it. So, folks are not gonna have their family members being populated all over the place. However, policies are put in place for a reason, so that when things are, uh, when things like this do happen, we have, um, laws on the books to immediately address it. So, um, and, 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 uh, each board, planning board, zoning board, do not underestimate the influence, the influence that you have when you sit on these boards.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vaughn. Mr. Harris, you can continue.
Organants twenty dash two is amending the Trenton City Code to add chapter twenty-three anti-fraternization policies.
I have a question. So, uh, again, I, I think that this is, uh, broad, and for many of the reasons that I outlined about the previous organs. Um, I think, uh, quite frankly, it's nobody's business who people are dating, who they're living with. Uh, the fact that there is enforcement here where the city of Trenton would be potentially, if this ordinance were to, to affect, uh, that they would be investigating situations in the workplace to determine whether a romantic and/or sexual relationship exists. Listen, um, it's nobody's business who any of us are sleeping with. Um, it shouldn't be a matter of the city of Trenton investigating it. I think it gets into a very, very dangerous line. Uh, you know, it provides, um, romantic relationships between employees in the confidential departments are prohibited. I mean, that's, yeah, and I just think that, um, it's nobody's business. And, uh, as long as it is not affecting people's work, um, the city of Trenton shouldn't be in the habit of investigating situations, uh, to determine whether a romantic and/or sexual relationship exists, and what would we be doing, would we be, you know, setting up outside people's houses, would we be tracking them? Uh, you know, we have a number of issues in this city, uh, that we should be focusing on. I don't necessarily see this as a big, uh, big deal. And, um, you know, my wife may be, you know, on the board of the library board, or the zoning board. Why should this ordinance get in the way of me finding my wife? Thank you.
Mr. Harris.
Twenty dash four is a capital ordinance appropriating six million dollars from the capital improvement fund.
You didn't do, pointed that straight.
Oh, I mean, I, I, I mean, I'm sorry, did we, I wanted to have a comment, a follow-up, just a real brief on the anti-fraternization. Um, but everybody remembers, you know, Clarence Thomas, Anita Hill, and, and those type of cases, and most recently, the Me Too movement, right? So, all these movements, um, have addressed issues like, uh, relationships in the, in the workplace. Uh, so we just have to, again, be cognizant of the implications and the sensitivity around, um, having, uh, the emotional, um, affectionate relationships in the workplace, and what they potentially can lead to, and what they will lead to is lawsuits for the city. So, there's a lot of liability to be had here when, when relationships, when people take risks, when employees come to work, they decide to have relationships with one another. And then when those relationships go sour, and it happens to be with a boss, a person on council, or et cetera, et cetera, the mayor, and then that individual, male or female, may want to sue the city. And that's what has happened, and, uh, it's plenty of cases, and the law department probably can share, where, uh, where, uh, these, these circumstances have happened, and then the city, or the, or the employer is gonna be, end up being liable. So, these type of policies are in place to primarily protect the employees, to make sure everybody comes to work feeling, um, protected, that their interests are protected, and that, on the other side, that the city also, as though they have a mechanism in place, so that they have educated the employees on the potential, um, risk and what can happen if you engage in such activity at work. You come to work to work. You don't come into work to look for your spouse, and, and, and date, and et cetera. So, um, and that's what fraternization is about. So, I, again, I just encourage all my council members to read it, understand it, and if there's some language that has to be fine-tuned, like Council President Luthu, if there's, if you want to take the boards out, and you don't want them to be covered, then that's, that's fair. Uh, but, uh, understand that these are policies that are very important, and within any organization, to let, to make sure that the well-being of our, uh, uh, employees are, are looked after, as well as the liability and the risk and the cost that organizations bear every day because of issues that come up in the workplace, because of people, um, having, um, inappropriate relationships.
I'm sorry, I missed over twenty dash three, which is an ordinance of the city of Trenton, County Mercer, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of certain easement parcels and the tax map of the city of Trenton to the state of New Jersey, Department of Transportation, as described.
So, we're going to sell the state back, what, we're selling the state, let's look at that.
This is, this is just a drainage easement.
Oh.
Um, so it's pipes and a bulkhead, and it's the, uh, along the river between the Cooper Riverfront, the restaurant, and the train bridge, uh, along the river.
You're saying that it's just, um, it's just pipes, but pipes are real important to us, because we own the water department, so we need to know what pipes are being sold.
These are dr, we're not selling pipes, we're giving the state DOT access for temporary construction, and it's permanently drainage pipes, stormwater drainage pipes, um, for the road that's there. So, this is land that cannot be developed, it's along the, the riverfront, and, you know, by approving it, putting a bulkhead to prevent, you know, further erosion, it might support maybe a bikeway or something else in the future. But this is land that doesn't have any development potential. And we'll still maintain, own the land, we're just giving them the right to put drainage pipes in.
Okay, I'll read it, right.
Thank you.
Twenty dash four is a capital ordinance appropriating six million from the capital improvement fund to pay for the acquisition of vehicles and equipment, buying for the water utility of the city of Trenton, County Mercer, State of New Jersey.
And this is an automatic roll call?
Yes.
Didn't we vote on this one before?
Yes, we did.
Why is it back? Why is it back, um, the business administrator class question?
It's a different ordinance number, to new ordinance.
And that's what I didn't understand.
No, but what, what about it's different, that's what I'm asking.
It's a different ordinance, it's a new ordinance number.
I'm asking the administration.
There's not, there's nothing different about it, we are reintroducing it, under, under a different ordinance number.
Okay, but I thought-
So, it could be reintroduced.
The rules and procedure only have to deal with our ordinances in terms of reintroducing them. It doesn't require, according to the language in the document, the administration can introduce an ordinance as many times as they want.
Administration can't take and pick and choose what part of the rules and procedure they use.
Oh, no, according to the language, from what I understand, it only refers to council-
No, the judge didn't see it that way. So, let me just ask this question, that, that I had asked many times before. So, you can just not change any of the content of the ordinance and bring it back under a new number? Is that a fact?
Yeah, that's, that's the law.
If an ordinance, an ordinance goes through its process, if it fails, votes down, that ordinance can be resubmitted as a new, brand-new ordinance with a new number, nothing has to change in it, and it goes through the same process again. And if it fails, it can be presented as a new ordinance with a new number, again, and again, and again.
You're good, just, I'll say it.
Ordinance number twenty dash five is a bond ordinance providing for various twenty nineteen acquisitions and improvements to the water utility in the city of Trenton, County Mercer, State of New Jersey, incorporating eleven million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of eleven million eight hundred thousand bonds of notes to the city to finance the course they're on.
Okay, so, I wanted to go back to the, the six million dollars, the twenty dash four, because I felt as though, when we turned this down, it was based on the fact that we are, we are under a twenty-eight million dollar shortfall. When we okay these bonds, that means that we are okaying this money, that we're making a promise for you to spend this money. How could we make a promise for you to spend six million dollars when the water department and the city, the water department first, has a serious shortfall? They say they don't have any revenue, they say that they don't, they spent down all of the surplus. We're, we're supposed to be bonded, our bonding capacity should be at three percent. We're at six and a half percent. How could the local finance board even approve us bonding down either one of these bonds? The, the eleven million or the six million? This is what I am not clear on. We don't have any money in this city. We're over our bonding capacity, and we're studying, taking out new bonds. We have ninety-three million dollars in bonds that the city said is sitting there, and instead of them repurposing the bonds that's not allocated to a project, they want to draw down more money on bonds, and we're over our bonding limit. Where does the fiscal responsibility come in at? How can you want us to draw down more money on these, uh, or bond out more bonds? You're over your bonding capacity. You got ninety-three million dollars in bonds, nobody has told us how much of those ninety-three million can be repurposed, how much of that money is allocated to certain projects? We've been asking that for the last year. And the finance director of the local finance board, that's supposed to help us be fiscally responsible, said, "Go ahead and draw the money down." But the city needs to say to me, "Where are you gonna get this money from that you constantly are bonding down? You don't have any money in the water department, we need to raise the water rates across the board to generate money." And you want to draw down? This doesn't make fiscally responsible sense to me. The bond council was here, would you explain this to me so I can understand it? Because right now, there is no clear understanding for me with this.
Sure, I will explain at least legal, the legal analysis you raised earlier about the six million dollars, that's not actually a bond ordinance. I'm sorry, Alfred Johnson, for instance, over at Spencer, bond council to the city of Trenton. Uh, the six million dollar capital ordinance is not actually a bond ordinance, meaning the city is not going to borrow money to fund those improvements. That's gonna be paid off in capital budget to water utility, uh, so there's no bonding or borrowing money for that.
Right, that's the money that they want us to commit to, and so, we'll, we'll say that, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna be responsible to make sure that you get this money later on. But I don't know how we can say that when we have a twenty-eight million dollar shortfall. So, you don't need to explain that to me. I might have said bond out of place on my part, but I do understand that if we vote on that twenty dash four, we are saying to the administration that we're gonna promise you this money, and how can we promise it when we got a twenty-eight million dollar shortfall? But explain the two, twenty dash five to me, the eleven million.
But can I go back and say one more thing about that, first, the million dollar ordinance, and maybe Janet can, can, can concur? I, my assumption is that there was a, a, a budget adopted for the water, water utility already?
Two years, two, two years ago, I believe it's FY eighteen, we took money out, the water department took money out of the surplus and put it in their, in their current budget, and put it into the capital improvement fund. Now, that, that money has been sitting there for a while now, as just the capital improvement fund, with no purpose to it. This six mil, and it's six million dollars, this six million dollars, now, this six million dollars is going to be purposed.
So, so, so let me just ask you this, so you said that, that they had sit, set money aside in the capital to improvement?
Years ago.
Years ago.
Okay.
So, if they set money aside in the capital to improvement, then why did they spend all of the surplus down to do all the upgrades? I'm not getting this, Janet. We spent all of our surplus, and we spent the revenue coming in for upgrades. And if there was money in the capital budget to do those, why wasn't it used? Why did we deplete the surplus? Explain that to me.
They weren't depleting the surplus.
The surplus is depleted as they stood in front of us and said it.
They needed this for the current budget.
No, but if you got money and set aside, why aren't you using the money that you set aside, rather than to use the surplus?
The money they set aside was for capital, for projects, not every day, uh, operations. The surplus is being used right now for operations.
Well, the President, I have a comment, I have to say something about it. Uh, I was very glad when I saw Mr. Stephen Pico, he was presented to us, and the first thing he said, he told to the papers also, that he was gonna ask for a forensic audit. Uh, I, definitely we do, because we have been asking questions about the eighteen point five million, about the thirteen millions for the cover of the reserve, about the other, well, the fifteen point five now, finally, they are gonna be used for the less service line. Uh, the less service line, supposedly the fifteen point five million were good for sixteen percent of the, sixteen percent. So, that means that the whole cost is over sixty thousand dollars. And we have money here that we're gonna use to buy cars, to buy stuff, uh, when, in a few months, once we finish this first stage of the less service, uh, line replacement, we're gonna have to issue more bonds, a lot more bonds for that. So, I believe it would be irresponsible to use whatever, either reserves, or whatever you call it, or capital funds, whatever you call it, to use it right now, until, until we get, first, we get the resource of the audit that was supposed to be done. And what it was, was supposed to be done. I asked a question last month, it's not, it's in the process, we had the RSPs. We had the RSPs for the forensic audit. What is the status of that forensic audit? I will refuse to vote yes on, vote on anything regarding what it was until I see the resource of that audit.
So, 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 so when Councilman Santiago says that the fifteen million dollars that's drawn down for the lead replacement line is not gonna be enough, and we already have spoken on that. So, my question is, if this six million dollars is in a set aside, can that six million dollars be used with, for the lead replacement line? Is that a special project?
Yeah, the lead replacement line is a capital.
Let me, I'm asking.
It could be, but it, it.
I'm just asking the question, could it be used for the lead replacement lines?
No.
Let me, let me hear an answer from the administration.
Madam President, uh, Calum Cherry, Department of Administration. Unfortunately, that is actually something that we pitched to the Department of Community Affairs. Um, currently, state legislation only allows us to do the lead service line replacement project with money funded by the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank. The state statute that allows us to go onto private property to do this work requires that the funding source come from the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank. So, that is why we are, we are using that specific money. Now, I will say that we have attempted to lobby, um, uh, Mr. Cruz and I, as well as, uh, representatives of the water utility, and in fact, other utilities throughout the state have attempted to lobby our state delegations to make changes to those state statutes. But currently, the reason we are using the funding source we're using for that project is because that is the only funding source permitted for that specific project.
And, and so, the, 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 the reason that that is not, um, clear to me is because the infrastructure trust fund has no money. And so, the bonds that we bonded down, that's on the backs of the residents and the taxpayers right now, because they told us in plain words at DEP that there was no money in the infrastructure trust, and it might not be no money there until March. Then Governor, uh, Murphy got the hundred million dollars. And that money was, is supposed to be for the, uh, the, 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 the infrastructure trust. But when we had our own councilwoman at that meeting and stood up and asked the governor, "How much of that money was he giving to Trenton?" He said on record that he did not know how much of that hundred million that Trenton was even going to see. So, on one hand, you came in front of us and you told us that we were gonna be forgiven for nine million. We get to DEP, vice chair and myself, and we find out that there was no forgiveness, because there was no money to even give us to be forgiven. Then the governor gets the hundred million, and he says he doesn't know how much of that Trenton is even going to get. So, you can't, I, the, 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 the state is another entity that can be charged for their misdeeds. Because if you're telling us that we can only fix the lead lines with the infrastructure trust money, and there is no infrastructure trust money, there's only the money that the taxpayers are gonna put up, then why aren't we challenging the state? Why aren't we going to our legislatures? Because this makes no sense, it's a bunch of double talk.
Yes, and I just want to add, declare, and even if it was money in the infrastructure bank that can be used, we can't use it, not for the lead service line replacement, because the laws on the state, the bill and the state legislature still has not been passed.
Like I said, it's a bunch of double talk. And so, I, you know, the fact.
Counsel, but I won't defend the state here at all. I do know they've been sending mixed messages over the last year. Uh, everything you said, I totally agree with in terms of, they told you one thing, they said something totally different. I will say that money was allocated to the, the fifteen million dollars was allocated, though, to the city, I want to say the end of October. Uh, there was a new allocation, money did come in, they did allocate fifteen million dollars, so that is being funded by NJIB. And the problem is you're gonna have more lead service lines that need to be replaced beyond what's, beyond the fifteen million we originally bonded for. And that money has not yet been committed. But the fifteen million dollars has been committed by the state. So, that is, that, that's set in stone, that's guaranteed. Going forward, I, I don't know. You know, at some point, you're gonna have more money, I think lead service lines are a higher priority. But right now, the money does not exist, and I completely, completely agree with everything you said about that. I don't, I won't defend the state at all. As, I, 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 that is your question about the six million dollars?
No, you, you did, um, hit on the six million, but I needed you to tell us about the eleven million and about how we are, I, we're over our bonding capacity. How do we?
So, um, as Council President correctly stated, that by statute, the city, um, should not be able to borrow money to a three and a half percent of a net present value of the three-year average of equalized, uh, equalized value property. So, that three and a half percent will vary from year to year, depending upon the values and properties in those state markets. Trenton, um, is, has been hurt, uh, because the city happens to be the capital city. You guys have a lot more, uh, state properties in the city that are not paying taxes than most other municipalities. That contributes heavily to why you guys owe your three percent limit, because you guys are not able to receive revenues from these state properties. Recognizing that, aside from any other issues that deal with lack of redevelopment in the city, um, it's been over six, about six percent for twenty years or so. Uh, however, there are, the statute also allows for exceptions to three and a half percent if approved by local finance board. So, local finance board has the ability by statute to review proposals for capital improvements, even though the debt will exceed three and a half percent. As long as they believe that paying that debt off will not, one, prevent you from paying your other bills, and two, that the, the items being financed are things that are essential to operating the city.
Okay, so, so, so to, to your question about the local finance board. So, as I stated earlier, we have, uh, the director of DCA sitting on this finance board, and they're supposed to help us come out of the MOU. And, 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 but yet and still, they're saying to us, "Keep kicking the can, keep kicking the can." And on the paper that Mrs. Shona, or am I pronouncing her name right? Presented to us, it said that we had deferred payments in the tune of two hundred and some million dollars where we weren't making payments, we just keep deferring. And so, when you keep deferring, the bills keep accumulating, they're not being paid off, and who are gonna pay those bills? My grandchildren and my great-grandchildren. So, if we are trying to get to a fiscally responsible position, we have to start somewhere. And that's what I'm saying about the hundred and eighteen million and the ninety-three million. Can't we look at that ninety-three million that they drew down already that they have not used? Find out what projects are still connected to the ninety-three million and what is left over? Take that leftover and say, "Well, you know what? We got forty million left over, 'cause fifty-three million is accounted to a project. There's forty million left, so now we don't need the hundred and eighteen. We subtract that forty million from the hundred and eighteen and start from there." But I mean, we have to do something to try to remedy this. We cannot keep going deeper and deeper into debt, and that's my point.
I know that, I, I'm not familiar with the ninety-three million, the hundred and twelve, I don't know what that is, so I'm not even familiar with that, so I, I can't really respond to that. It sounds, you say it makes a lot of sense, but I, I don't know what that is.
Bonds and notes not authorized.
The deferring and not paying?
No. Bonds and notes not authorized.
Not, not authorized, maybe authorized but not issued. Okay, so authorized means that there's bond ordinances that are, that exist on your books. But the bonds have not been issued under those orders. You can issue the bonds, but you don't have to issue. So, authorized bond orders mean you're actually gonna issue the debt. It gives you the building issue debt at a future point in time.
Right.
Uh, and your question about that is what, the debt deferring, the issues of debt, is that, is that the issue or?
On the, on the paper that she gave us, the last two lines were deferred payments. All of the last two lines.
It's not enough to build the bonds, though.
No, no.
Okay. Uh, going back to your, issue the three and a half percent as well, I also wanted to point out, when it comes to water and sewer, because they're utilities, their debt does not count to three and a half percent at all. It's only general capital debt that goes to three and a half percent. Any debt issue to water and sewer does not count towards your debt limit, three and a half percent at all. So, that has no impact on the debt limit. So, I have a question. What is our, the percentage subtracting sewer and the water debt? What is, what?
It's not, it's not included in the percentage.
Well, I know, but.
Six percent is just the city.
It's just the city. It's the city, it's the city, right. Uh, and going back, and this, I hate to keep talking, but I feel, I think the more information, the better. I think you also have to look at the fact that the city, like I said, has been six and a half, six percent around there, hovering around there, five and a half percent to six and a half percent for many years. If you don't borrow any money to make capital improvements, you actually can compound, it makes things a lot worse. I mean, you have to have, you have to fix streets in twenty years. You need to, you need to buy new cars or, or DPW equipment. There's certain things, if you don't actually, if you don't actually finance capital equipment over a certain period of time, then things wear down, and now you, yeah, now you don't buy proper city services. So, you, I, I'm not saying you can't be scrutinized and, and, and carefully scrutinized what you actually do borrow money for, but to not make any capital improvements, I think can compound your issues over time.
Right.
Water and sewer. What you make, that's not my purview, unless they turn that to say.
Right, but what, but, and I, and I understand that we need to, we, we all know that we need improvements. But what I'm saying is, if you're got, if you have a twenty-eight million dollar shortfall, and then you have bonds that you want us to keep issuing, then you have, uh, bonds that were already approved and some of them unpurposed. I just believe that it would, to me, the administration needs to go back to the table. They need to look at those unpurposed bonds, see what money they were, uh, designate, what, what projects were designated for some of that money, and all that's not, for example, um, Mr. Cherry came back to us about, about a month ago, and he found that six million dollars was not being, hadn't been used. Now, two we, uh, 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 three weeks later, they want to spend the six million dollars on these vehicles. And I'm saying to them, "We don't need to allocate any money for any vehicles until we shut down that twenty-eight million dollar gap, and we do not need to borrow any bond, anything else out, until we find out how they're gonna repurpose that ninety-three million." And that's my point. Um, I, I just think that the rug has to be pulled, we can't just keep sweeping stuff under the rug.
President McBride, why aren't we purposing these bonds? Why? What's, what's the big reason? If we have all this money outstanding, why, why is it outstanding? Why? Is there a general reason, is it specific to particular bonds? Like, is it a lack of, I guess, my question?
So, throughout the years, there's been different people in the water department, and they had different visions of what their capital plan is, is, okay? So, that there was, there's, there's money sitting out there for big projects, like, uh, getting new meters and getting a metering system, which is still a good project to do, and you don't want to lose that money, that's purpose for that. But right now, they, that's, that's not their concern. And then, there's new people right now in the water department that feel that certain, there are certain projects for the eleven point eight and for the six million, that these things need to be done right away. And, and, and that's why they're putting it on the, uh, the agenda. There was, uh, prior to that, the capital budget that was approved in nineteen was for twenty-one mi- twenty-one million. I don't know if you remember that. Okay, it went down from the twenty-one million, which was a different administration there, to this new, to the new people that are running the water department now, the chief engineer, that feels that this, this money of eleven point eight will be some projects that he can do within the year. Okay, I've told the water department to go through all their ordinances and go through and make, and give me a list of all the ones that are not going to be done, and we will cancel those ordinances. So, I, I'm waiting for them to give me a listing of what projects they're not going to do. I just want to do it once, a clean sweep of all ordinances. And the projects that they're not gonna do, they're in the, they're, they told me that they're going to, they'll give me a listing, and we're gonna cancel all those that will reduce the amount of the outstanding authorized but not issued.
Does that impact our credit rating at all, having a large outstanding, um, unpurposed bond?
Unpurposed bonds, or it's a purpose bond order, meaning the ordinance itself, they have purposes in them. They just, but the, but the debt will never issue.
It's usually private issue, unissued.
Right, so having these ordinance that authorize you to debt, but not actually issuing the debt, meaning you're not actually paying the money on it, it's just authorization. So, from a credit perspective, it's not gonna really impact your credit, because you're not actually borrowing on those ordinances. You know, there's ninety-three million you can access, but you're not actually doing so.
Yeah, I would, I would just add to that, that if, if there's ninety-three million of authorized debt that hasn't been issued, and through a review process, that number can be reduced, because a certain percentage of that, you know, was going to be done, and now priorities have changed, we're not doing it. And we can lower that by five million, ten million, thirty million, whatever the number might be. That is, would be viewed as a credit positive by the rating agencies, because the rating agencies do assume, if the debt's authorized, even if it hasn't been issued yet, you're going to issue it at some point. So, if there is debt actually that's authorized that we're not ever going to need, it would be helpful to cancel it and.
That's what I thought, that's what I assumed, yeah. Ninety-three million is a lot of money, so you have that.
So, ninety-three million dollars is a lot of money, so why can't they repurpose that, that money that has already been allocated and, and, and lessen this eleven million? That's my question.
If it's not needed for those purposes, legally, you can do that. It would still require a council vote by.
Exactly, but I'm just saying, why don't the administration move to lessen this number from, uh, eleven million if we have that, those unpurposed bonds?
And if that's gonna help our credit profile, it helps us borrow money at a lower interest rate? You know, that seems like a.
It's like the decent thing to do.
And one last question to what President McBride said, um, and this is for the administration. You know, we're in transitional aid, and that has, um, basically defanged us as a council and as a governmental body. Um, any decision that we want to make, we have to run over to DCA and get permission. So, you know, if I had known that before coming on council, I would have did something else over the next four years. But the fact of the matter is, what is the long-term vision for the mayor to get us out of transitional aid so that we can literally have our power back? So, I guess what I'm saying is, is there a long, what's that?
We're gonna be out of the transitional aid, because I didn't sign the application. And they only gave us five point six million. We shouldn't have been looking to them for anything but capital city aid that is owed to us in lieu of.
Yeah, fair enough. Well, Council President McBride answered my question, thank you. All right, I don't have any other questions, you can ask my question, thank you.
So, ordinance twenty dash six is an ordinance amended to Trenton City Code and Chapter twenty-four anti-harassment, anti-sexual harassment, and anti-bullying policy.
I have a question. In, uh, in C, anti-bullying of policies, uh, section seven, um, states that any employee or appointed or elected official of the city who has been found after investigation to have bullied another in violation of his policy will be subject to a required apology, counseling, training, and/or disciplinary action up to and including termination of employees. Now, it's my understanding, uh, that elected officials may not be removed by, uh, the only reason that they can't be removed is by recall. That they're, or, or be removed by a court system, uh, for being guilty of a, um,
I don't think that's true.
So, a crime, that is, that's the only reason. By recall, you can only be removed by recall, or if you've been convicted of a crime, and you're then removed, uh, by a court system, by a judge.
Well, sexual, sexual harassment can be a problem.
The council.
The council has the, the council has the power.
To move.
To, to remove someone, they have to provide a hearing and make a decision.
Right, is that, yes, it is. And with the, it has to be with the supermajority, because there has been council members moved from this body with the supermajority. Y'all need to look that up, Ms. Ash, you need to look that up, because that is inaccurate information.
Well, I'm asking a question, this is a question, this is not a statement, it's a, it's an inquiry. So, is that the case, uh, Mr. Ash, 'cause I, I'm not familiar with that.
I would have to research, because that is not my understanding, and I would really have to research that, because I have not seen.
What about you?
Gives authority to a council member to, to remove another.
Yeah. I mean, I was elected by two thousand seven hundred and forty-five people, there's no.
Who's gonna move? I thought that was always in action after some type of court. I thought that was always in action after some type of court initiation.
No, 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 no. The only person that I think can help us, and I'll discuss that with you off record. That, um, that would be able to help you answer that question, and don't have to wait for, um, the law department. I'll, um, share that information, but I just don't wanna go public with it.
Fair enough, okay.
And additionally, uh, a resolution was brought to you presented by Councilwoman Vaughn, I believe everyone has a copy in front of them, Resolution of twenty dash twenty-five. As a resolution to repeal Resolution nineteen dash five eighty-one pursuant to Title fifty-four taxation, waiving the interest and penalties regarding the tax bill for the property located at one sixteen Old Road Street, block eight two oh three, block four in the city of Trenton, as it pertains to the fourth quarter tax bill.
Now, I have a question about this. The question that I have is that Mr. Morelli and Mr. Cruz had stated that they would address this issue. And what has occurred here is that there has not been a remedy to date. And we were hoping that this particular issue, because there is definitely some criminal element here, and, and certain things should be dealt with in-house, rather than to get down to Superior Court when you don't have to go. And so, I was hoping that Mr. Morelli and yourself, along with the mayor, had given some special attention to this situation and remedied this, so the council would not have to be involved. I, I just hope that that can occur between now and Thursday, because I think this right here should be addressed by the administration.
Well, Madam President, at your request, at the Thursday, uh, Doc and Review meeting, uh, Mr. Morelli and I did agree that we were gonna be meeting, uh, to find a resolution to the issue of the landlord. And, uh, unfortunately, because we already had other things on our agenda, we have not been able to meet, but that is our goal, to resolve the issue. Uh, it's just that, um, we have to do a little research, and, uh, we will be addressing it.
Well, this, that's not, that's not a good enough answer.
You know, I just hope that if, if it's, if it's, if it's done before the vote on Thursday, that would help us all out. If, if you and Mr. Morelli could make some time to address it before Thursday, and then we would not have to address this at all. If it's not addressed by you by Thursday, then we will, um, re- repeal it, because the time limit on here is causing some great grief to the, um, to the owner, to the homeowner. And so, I'm just hoping that between now and Thursday, that, uh, Mr. Morelli and you can get with.
The lawyer.
Okay.
Well, I would like to hear a more absolute date and time before Thursday. So, tomorrow, this Wednesday, and then this Thursday.
You only have one day, Wednesday, so.
Right, so exactly, so.
Wednesday, we have one day after that.
And the, and the families here, right here.
If they address it between now.
And, and, okay, um, if I could continue. The repeal would probably be good for the council to do, because the initial resolution that we passed, which you, which, which we should not have, right? We should have spoken up then, on behalf of the constituents, and because that was very restrictive and penal, and, and, um, and punitive, whereby Mr. Morelli and/or Mr. Cruz, the administration, was, had given the family sixty days to comply and pay the taxes. So, now, the sixty days is approaching, which is what? Uh, it was, uh, uh, November fourteen, so now we're what, uh, January fourteen? So, we're a week away. So, before, what will happen? These individuals will go into foreclosure and potentially lose their home. I'm sorry that most of the people in the room don't find that as, as a hardship or a crisis, but I deem that a crisis, and I think that would be a sad state of affair, just because certain people didn't get along or didn't wanna serve as an ivory, uh, but, uh, 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 resident, that they wanna sit here and sit on time-sensitive information as critical as somebody's property or asset.
So, Council President, did request that Mr. Morelli meet with these, to discuss this.
The last time we did, we, we discussed that in the record, but I know we did that before, and once somebody, the administration called the police on these individuals.
How I understand, about the Thursday Doc Review, there was a dialogue where Mr. Morelli and Mr. Cruz agreed to go here and, and fix this. But I would tell you that since the presence of this resolution, we are not going to do anything until the action of the governing body is taken on this resolution, because this dictates certain things, that it repeals, and then directs the party to meet with the tax collector to come up with an amicable resolution.
Or an installment payment.
Right, so he is not going to move forward with your request until this resolution is acted upon, because it's like the language in your resolution.
Uh, well, what is, what's the issue with not repealing it? Why not repeal? You have to repeal it. You have to repeal it.
But what is he saying? We've already discussed the fact that they should have acted, because there was some illegal activity.
Yeah, you asked Mr. Morelli to work with Mr. Cruz and find a resolution.
Yes.
The council is now presenting a, a resolution asking you to repeal, and instructing the participants to meet with the tax collector and find an amicable resolution.
So, you're saying that Mr. Morelli will not in between tomorrow and Thursday afternoon get with Mr. Cruz and try to resolve this? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Cruz? But we're saying that you won't have to take any action if they resolve it.
You still will have to repeal, you still have to repeal. You passed a resolution, uh, Council President.
But if it's resolved, what is there to repeal?
The resolution that you've already passed.
If it's resolved.
No, because, no, because when you write the resolution, it says that, that they're asking for amicable payment installations.
But I'm saying to you, if they resolve it between now and Thursday, what is there to repeal? Once it's been resolved, there is no.
Okay, then you're gonna repeal it between now and Thursday.
That's amicable.
Well, I still say we can repeal it.
But it's saying, if you read there, it says an amicable ending.
Well, you guys, you, you all voted for it.
But, no, we're saying, Robin, what I'm saying is, if Mr. Cruz and Mr. Morelli resolve this before Thursday evening at five-thirty, then that is the end.
Okay, but they have not committed to that, Council President.
Yes, he has.
So, he has not. So, when are you gonna, uh, meet with, uh, the parties to do that?
He's gonna be meeting with Mr. Morelli to, to, to get it done. So, we, we, I'll be talking to them tomorrow, but we'll see.
Well, nonetheless.
This resolution is there.
Stand or actually?
It's there, but we will be speaking tomorrow morning with Mr. Morelli, and I'll speak with Mr. Cruz, and hopefully will come up. The, 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 the only thing is that the family has to have some type of money, because the taxes has to be paid. All right, so, um, we're gonna ask the public.
And I just wanna say one, thanks, since we're on the subject of taxes. There is a couple other constituents that have come forward, that this type of activity is going on, and is pretty rampant throughout the community. So, we have to fix this. And to your point, Council President, you know, we cannot, the council cannot continue to be burdened with such, uh, such an approach. Right, we have to do a resolution every time, uh, there is processes not followed with the administration, and, and the tax office or finance. So, when other parties are coming into the city, and coming to council, saying that they are being, uh, 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 forced out of their homes and, and, and telling them that, that installment or agreements with the city is not possible, and they need to come up with, uh, certain taxes, um, immediately in an accelerated way, or they're gonna be pushed out of their homes and lose their property, that's unacceptable, and it's against the law. But there are some people who don't care about the law. So, but I do. Okay, so, and that, and that goes to all my council members too. I believe in the law, and we have processes in this city that we must follow, and we're gonna do it. And there's no getting around it. Okay, and, and these people, residents, taxpayers of the city, deserve better and deserve our attention, and they pay your salaries. And you're not doing anybody a favor at this table or around these chairs. You're obligated to do it. So, by the end of the day, tomorrow, I would expect Mr. Morelli and Mr. Cruz to resolve it. Or otherwise, I will hope that this council will vote unanimously to get these, to get this thing passed. And just because Robin Vaughn has voted forward, everybody has an issue with it. But all my council members, you've passed this, take some accountability for your actions against a resident that helped put you here.
What are you talking about?
I, I said it just like that.
I don't understand what you're talking about.
Excuse me, Caldwell Wilson, I believe that the person called the individual, and you did nothing, you did nothing.
I'm not gonna do this at this meeting, okay? If you wanna talk to me, we'll walk out of the meeting.
I'll talk to you right now.
No, no.
Caldwell Wilson, yes, yes, of course, well.
Ladies, we're, we're, we're talking about a resolution that we needed to address, and it doesn't need to be a personal attack on anyone. We, we are addressing the issue, and let's try to get the issue resolved, because more times than one, the issue is overlooked when we get personal. We need to stick to the issue at hand, and it's to resolve.
That's what we're supposed to do around here.
It's to resolve the, the.
Don't do their jobs.
The situation with the, with the residents. And that's, that's where, that's where we should be. We have to stick to resolving this issue that the resident has, and we cannot let it, let this here type of stuff overshadow the, the issue.
Sounds good, Council President.
Okay, so, um, we're gonna allow the public to speak, uh, Mr. Harris?
Yes, so if anybody wishes to join the council this time, please stand and state your name and address for the record. We can talk about any, any item that is on the ballot for consideration.
If not, we will vote on it on Thursday.
Is there anyone from the public that wants to speak? Okay, you have to, um, you have to state your name and your address for the record.
Anthony Samuel, State United Council. Our address is, uh, five twenty-five Penny Avenue. That's the old Sisera Barber Shop, that's the first barber shop in Trenton, Jersey, Black Barber Shop. Um, I bought the property from, uh, Mrs. Sisera, that's the daughter. And, uh, she was getting kinda older, and, uh, she gave me good price. Oh, the part, um, it was circumstances where I had to keep the barber shop on, and I've been in that area twenty-five years.
I know, we're in the lot.
Yeah, I've been selling shoes there for twenty-five years. So, uh, I got the, uh, property from her, and, uh, it took some while, she went, went to one place, but I couldn't find it. So, I got the property from her, when I got the property from her, she told me, uh, keep it up, and you can make it happen. I think you might owe six thousand dollars, but it caught on fire. So, it caught on fire, the city wouldn't let her get no access to the property at all. It caught on fire, Mr. Sisera died two thousand ten, ca, caught on fire, uh, fire maybe two thousand twelve. They charging, they, uh, so I got the property, the city of Trenton is charging eighteen percent, it was six thousand. They want twenty thousand dollars for me to get the property back. So, I told them, I came out, said I wanna get the property, said, well, you can't get it, you gotta go bankrupt. If you don't go bankrupt, we wanna get the property, 'cause it's a lien on it. I work every day, I got kids in the city, my, my credit's okay, so if I get bankrupt, I can't get nothing. I can come go bankrupt for one property, just to try to save the city, that doesn't make no sense. Abatement, I asked to get abated. Since that has caught on fire, the tax has been going up, and the value is not there. I went down to the lady, maybe seven weeks ago, sits on the left-hand side, gave her the property name and everything. She goes to the file, she said, okay, she didn't tell me about, she, she said, yes, this is under foreclosure, a lien at the city or whatever. I said, what can I do to keep this property? She did the, uh, calculations up, whatever, she came up with forty-five hundred dollars. I said, it's hard to get it, but I want it. She said, where you gonna get that money from? I said, I'm gonna get it, 'cause I want that property. Came back, a week later, I said, ma'am, uh, I think I get this, uh, money up, give me the date. I didn't talk to you about nothing. What are you talking about? Why Mr. Kirkedell? Well, we do get payment plans, but, uh, where are you gonna get this money from? Why are you worried about that? I mean, that's, that's not even fair. Now, keep on calling, keep on calling, called a lawyer. The lawyer called the city's lawyer. They said, there's no problem with getting a payment plan, but the city doesn't want no payment plan, they want that twenty thousand dollars. If they don't get that twenty thousand dollars, you can't do nothing. So, I'm out of it. That's not fair. If I would've known that, if I had to pay twenty thousand dollars, get that property without no payment plan, and then for me to get bankruptcy, mess up my whole credit, I would never do that. That, that's not sensible. That's not sensible. All I want is a payment plan. I mean, it's, it's worth something, has a couple apartments, has a barber shop in the community, in the community. Give me a chance to get, give me a chance to do something. So, I, so I just lost it. So, what they gonna do? What they gonna do? Knock it down or whatever? I mean, that's not fair. That's, that's not fair. That's not fair. They haven't came out there for abatement, they haven't even came out there. You, the, the city was afire. They, you can't, no access to the building. She called, she's a senior citizen, she gave it up to me, because she didn't know what to do. Death certificate, we brought everything down, all from the, all from the, uh, where we got the title. The title game, had its death wrong, when the fire was wrong, everything was wrong, but still it went through, still went through. So, now, I don't know what to do, but I don't wanna lose that property. I don't, I don't wanna lose that property.
Can you give your name to Mr. Harris and your address, Mr. Harris? Could you take his information now?
Uh, thank y'all for hearing me, I appreciate y'all, but it's rough here, like I said, y'all.
It's disheartening, it's disheartening to hear these kind of stories.
Twenty thousand dollars, I don't have twenty thousand dollars to give him right away, but I can work it out. I got a daughter in school right now, two of them.
I just, I just want to, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
It will do everything we can only publicly.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay, so we're gonna move on to civic comment, um, we're gonna close up the public comment. Okay, so we'll move on to civic comment, and we'll start with Councilwoman Vaughn, since she wanted to respond to the gentleman.
Now, I just wanna say, there is a travesty, that people are being forced out of their homes, and we have, um, it seems like a epidemic of accelerated tax liens against certain populations in the city. Now, there are some folks who may not have a voice, who may not be as sophisticated as others, when they come in and they ask questions. But folks who are hired here in the city, you guys have the skill sets to be able to service them, and you know the processes. And so, as they're representatives of this city, I will make sure you do your jobs, and that you facilitate providing them with all the services and tools, so they can stay in their homes. And if we have installment plans, payment plans, then, Mr. Cruz, I suggest you huddle with your tax assistance, uh, department, with the tax collectors department, with your finance team, and you get those, uh, processes together, and you offer them to the people when they come into the city, so that they don't lose their homes. It's unacceptable to say, oh, we, oh, you gotta have your twenty grand upfront, and then berate them and belittle them in a way as if though they're not worthy. That's unacceptable. So, I will just follow up with the family that's here today, and also this gentleman, to make sure you can count on this council to make sure this city provides you the services and the offering of tools that can help you keep your homes and your assets. And I don't know what is the underlying issue, but I think we all know what it is. And I will not tolerate this type of disenfranchisement and marginalization of a population of people by folks who work in this city. What that, the story this gentleman just told. What that, the story this gentleman just told is outrageous. It doesn't hurt anybody in this city to help somebody get on a payment plan. And that's money that's gener, that's generated, that can come in, into our city, to help us pay these bills that Council President was talking about. Instead of having property sitting there vacant, waiting for what? Or waiting for who? Special interests? Well, I'm tired of waiting on the special interests to come in here and gentrify the city. You're not gonna leave out legacy of native Trentonians. So they deserve better, and they will get better. And I will be here to make sure I provide that voice. So that's all I have to say.
Councilman Michelle.
Melting.
Councilman Blakely.
I have a community meeting on January fifteenth at Grace Community Church at seven hundred West Gate Street, as well as members of the West Ward and my colleagues to attend. We'll be talking about general community concerns, and I just wanna say, I spent a lot of time over the break thinking about the direction of this council, and I really hope that two thousand twenty is more productive and more fruitful than previous years. We have some pretty strong disagreements and strong personalities on this council, but I think at the end of the day, we have more in common than we have separate or distinct. And so I just really hope that we can operate in the spirit of mutual respect. We don't have to agree, I think often we arrive to our best decision at the conclusion of vigorous and rigorous debate. And so I look forward to taking the lessons of last year into this year, and I just hope that my colleagues had a great, you know, and great new year, a great holiday season, and that we can work together to build this city forward. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Um, Councilman Harrison? Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Uh, yes, I have a question for Mr. Cruz of Wally. So I drove down Mortlithicane Boulevard the other day, where they, in the past months, they've been doing all kinds of utility work on the street. Have you seen the condition that they left that street in? Mark, have you been up there, Wally? Mortlithicane Boulevard, where they, right down the center of the street, they've hatched it, and it's all rust, it's disgusting. Why aren't we holding these utility companies and these cable companies responsible? They are supposed to put those streets back to the condition they got them in, and Mortlithicane Boulevard was paved a couple of years ago.
They are, they are coming back. Yes, I will get back, I will get on there tomorrow.
Yeah, they need to come back, and they need to resurface that whole area. It's disgrace. As a matter of fact, they don't take into consideration when they do that, that you may have someone walking across the street, going to the church, a senior or somebody, get their cane or their foot stuck in one of those grooves and fall on the street. Cars that go down that street, so, and, and it looks terrible too. So you need to drive up there and take a look at it, it's a disgrace.
Councilwoman. It's all due. Ladies and gentlemen, I would just like to say a couple things. First of all, I need the Housing and Economic Developer to get back with us about the RFPs that had been put out for the senior centers, for the community centers. That community center on Franklin Avenue, the West Ward Center, all of those were directives from HUD and the Public Library, and there has not been a movement in two years. So I need some answers from the Housing and Economic Director on those RFPs, and the money was frozen because they didn't know how to draw it down. Now, they gave us a directive and told us not to entertain a bunch of small organizations because they didn't have the manpower to, uh, uh, follow the HUD laws. So if you don't have the manpower and you keep giving these small organizations this money, we're gonna end up back where we were, frozen assets, instead of getting the things done that they told us to do. We haven't heard about the hiring in the Housing and Economic Department. When Mr., when the director came on, the department had been turned inside out, and there was, and I delivered the letter to the director that we had gotten an okay from Tina and from Melanie Walters to do a departmental forensic audit to find out where everything was. Now, I delivered that letter to Mr. Delias, that's been over nine months, I haven't heard anything back about that. And it appears that they don't answer questions, they avoid coming up with any paperwork that we ask for. We've been asking for the last year for them to give us the information about the bonds. We've been asking Shakira Ali to help us meet with the other human services departments to cut out some of this nonsense with these people coming from these other municipalities. We've already lost a hospital because of outside individuals coming into our city using of our resources. We've lost a hospital here. There's no place in this city for a young couple to come and deliver a child. And I asked Ms. Ali, please, let's address this issue, we cannot afford to lose anything else, any more vital departments in our city. But they come in here and they take these jobs, and they don't want to do their work. Where is the meetings with these other municipalities, so they can take responsibility for their own homeless people? She refuses to address it. We don't have a hospital here in the city for a young couple to move in this city, start a family. Where are they gonna go have their children at? You keep allowing outside forces to come into this city, lean on our fire department, our school system, our hospitals, and we're getting nothing out of it. And then we get directors in here, we ask them, work with us. And they got us down as, oh, this council can't be worked with. No, we can. When you don't wanna work with us, you don't wanna give us the information that we asked you for. It's simple. Do the job that you're getting paid to do. You're taking the taxpayers' money, for God's sake, give them some services here in this city. You keep wanting to push and kick these cans down the road, somebody has to pay for these bonds. As far as DCA is concerned, I am not even concerned with Melanie Walters sitting over the finance department saying, yeah, go get some more bonds out on the city. What do they want this city to do? Crash and burn? Because that's where we're headed. That is where we're headed. And nobody seems to be caring about that. Everybody is here collecting a paycheck, and then they're leaving the city, and we're left with all of this. I need some help from the administration in order to turn this city around. This council, oh, we appear to be confrontational? It's only because we're not getting the answer that we asked for. The streets look like hell, the trees haven't been trimmed in this city in ten years. Somebody sent a letter to my mailbox and said, Mrs. McBride, I am a tree cutter. I was fired from the recreation department. They say they only had two tree cutters, but here it is, he left his license, his address, and his certification that he was a tree cutter. Then I had the director of the recreations, she said she found a million dollars. How do you find a million dollars? Where was it at? And why didn't anybody else know that the million dollars was there? I'm telling y'all, this, this only takes place on Spider-Man or the Twilight Zone. Gotta do better than this. Don't keep pushing this stuff back to the council. You guys have to do your job, just like we have a job to do. This city has to turn around, and it has to turn around by being fiscally responsible and paying attention to the issues of the city. I go down to the Henry J. Austin Health Center, there's ten opioid heads there, that none of them have an address in the city. They all are from out of town, from Lawrence, from West Windsor, coming to Henry J. Austin Health Center, where we foot the bill for that place to stay afloat. And nobody is trying to address it. You ride down on twenty-nine, and there's five panhandlers, aggressive panhandlers, running up to the cars, and you wonder why we can't get people to come into the city. The city was filled with trash after Christmas. You couldn't ride down not one street in this city without seeing trash just flowing all over the place. I asked the administration before the holiday season got here, please advertise on the front page of the Trentonian if you have to. Tell the residents that there will not be any garbage pickup Christmas or the day after. Thursday is the main trash pickup day. They said we use the robo-call, which a lot of families don't have connection to the robo-call because they have their personal cell phones. So trash was lined up in the city, all in the street, all over the place, and they were adding an extra pickup day, so the trash remained in the street. For a whole week and a half, the trash remained on the street. This is unacceptable, Wally, because you were at the meeting when I said, run the ads, let the people know what's going on in the city. I'm telling you, the city looks dirty, we're not getting the services, the taxes is going up, and now you wanna ask for more bonds, and now you have people that don't even wanna address the situation that we have people from Hamilton, Lars, West Windsor, and Jackson coming into this city using of all of our services, and we're not getting anything back for it. This is disgraceful. Then you hear people that live in the city that pays the taxes, that's being asked to come up with twenty thousand dollars in one lump sum. Then you have a family sitting here that we know there were criminal activities on them to lose their home. This has to stop. I'm telling you, we're in the twenty-twenty, there has to be a change in this city. If you don't wanna help the residents in this city, then we need to pack our bags and go, because you're here for one thing and one thing only, to help turn this city around. And if you don't wanna do it, if you haven't put your affidavit in saying that you have moved in the city, if you don't think that this city is worth you living here, then you need to pack your bags and you need to go. You don't need to be asked to leave, you just need to go. We need to turn this city around. I need some help, we need to get this done in twenty-twenty. I apologize for my outrage, but I can't deal with it anymore. The residents are suffering here, and it has to change. Mr. Harris, you can take this.